Everyone have mics? Good evening, everybody. Wanted to call our Monday, December 8th meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. How's everyone doing tonight? Thank you for your patience. We are getting started a little late. Thank you for everyone who joined us for our reception out in the hallway before. I'm not seeing the agenda pulled up. Oh, there it goes. Let's start with the roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Conley? Here. Ms. Downs?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Shuns Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
And Mayor Hardy?
Here.
Thank you, council.
I could ask everyone to join us on a pledge of allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda?
I move to adopt tonight's meeting agenda.
The second? Second. Downs on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
You post? Meeting agenda is adopted. So it is a special night tonight. Every two years, we recognize neighbors that we elect to serve this community. And in a small city like ours, these council members aren't really politicians and elected officials. They really are just neighbors who care. And so we're going to start our meeting off with oaths of office for incoming members of council and then recognize our outgoing member as well. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to the city clerk. Is still your mic?
Of course.
And I would ask Mr. Egan, Ms. Conley, Mr. Snyder, and Ms. Downs to join me up here. I'm going to have you slide that this way. There we go. And we're going to turn this to so we can take a little better. Okay, we've got that. All right, and we're administering the oath of office to our returning and new council members. If you'd raise, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, according to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do, and I will.
Thank you. And you're saying? And I need you to sign your oaths. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Can we get a photo with everybody? Come down? Yeah, why don't you try to come down? And so if the newly elected can stay here, we're going to, the Board of Elections is going to present your certificates of election. And these are our election officials presenting the certificates of election, and then they will say a few words from the podium afterwards.
I'm Renee Andrews, outgoing Secretary of the Electoral Board, so I guess this is my last opportunity to congratulate those who were elected and to wish you the best in your terms of office. And for those of you up there, continue, continue doing the good work that you've done. I know for me, it's been wonderful to know that we've had you as our council. And Mr. Egan, we're delighted to welcome you to the council. So thank you.
Can we do the recognition of, for Ms. Andrews while she's up?
Sure. Ms. Andrews, you don't get to go yet. The City Council would like to appreciate you for your many years of service, and we are grateful for your work as a steadfast advocate for fair, secure, transparent, and well-run elections. And the editorial for me is more important than ever, so thank you very much for that. Your dedication to serving the community makes Falls Church a better place to live, work, and do business. By your dedicated efforts, you have contributed significantly to the future success of the City of Falls Church. Thank you.
I think Mr. Burkey had a few words as well after you, Ms. Andrews.
Oh, you want to go first?
Okay. Mayor Hardy and members of the council, and I would like to thank so many of my election colleagues and friends who, who have come out tonight. Serving the election community in this city has really been the honor of a lifetime. And if you'll allow me, I'd like to share just a few words of gratitude to some people here and some others that are no longer with us, who have helped me to come to this moment. As I shared with council a few months ago, elections have been in my blood from day one. I was born on Election Day after both of my parents voted. I had wanted to serve as an officer of election for, for several years, but I, I had to wait until my kids were old enough that I could leave them for a 15- or 16-hour day because my husband traveled a lot on business. Coincidentally, just over 30 years ago, I met Edna Frady. And we met through an unrelated volunteer activity, and we instantly became friends. Edna encouraged me to serve the city, and I did. And I believe my first election was the 1996 presidential. That could be wrong, but that was one of my first. Electoral Board member Ann Murdy was a mentor to me in, in my election work, and I was absolutely in awe to see how much knowledge our registrar at the time, Debbie Taylor, had of election law. When John Clinton retired from the Electoral Board in 2002, Edna asked if I would like her to submit my name for consideration as an Electoral Board member to the court to be appointed. I eagerly said yes. Tom Smolinski was appointed, and I was called for grand jury duty. A year and a half later, Ron Crouch moved away, and Edna again asked would I, would I like for her to submit my name? And I said, yes, but only if I get appointed to the Electoral Board, not the grand jury. Well, that time I, I was appointed, and I served roughly my first six years very happily with Ann Murdy and Tom Smolinski as my colleagues, and there just couldn't be better people to work with. We got along so well. The Arlington Electoral Board also was known for their collegiality, and we used to kind of vie who was the, the most collegial board in the state. And then Ann retired, and Marguerite Chevlin joined our board and was as a member for several years. And the best thing that the three of us did together, Ann Murdy, Tom Smolinski, and me, was we appointed Dave Burkey as our registrar in 2009. No matter what else we might have done, that was the best move we ever made. I'm talking to council, it's got to be true. Dave has been with us for 16 years and has become much more than a colleague, at least to me, is one of my most trusted friends. Then Tom retired, and I served with other dedicated election professionals, including Lynda Nebergall, Bill Wanland, Megan Dolan, and several others. And now my colleagues are, or might have been, Ellen Wisdom and Art DeSalle. There are so many others from whom our board has received support over the years. Deputy City Manager Cindy Master. You wouldn't believe the number of hats she wears. Yes, you all would believe the number of hats she wears. She would coordinate activities ranging from employee interviews, performance appraisals, clearing parking lots of cars to make room for voter parking, providing access to City Hall when it's locked up, and never missing an opportunity to check in with us on Election Day to make sure that we keep our sanity. Cindy couldn't appreciate you more. Clerk of Court Paul Ferguson bends over backwards to make sure that the transfer of election paperwork between our offices is accomplished with the least disruption to anybody's schedule. And he sets up our work area and materials to make our audits and recounts go smoothly, efficiently, and professionally. So many other city folks, and I might be leaving somebody out, but springing to the top of my mind, IT, public works, the schools, the community center always make sure that our election equipment is delivered to the polling places and that everything is functioning well and ready for voters. And Sheriff Kay, it's back here somewhere, and Chief Fard always have our backs. Finally, I thank Dave, Stacy, and Rodrigo for running the office every day, making sure that voter registration and election preparation activities are accomplished flawlessly and for always being there when we need them. Bill and I planned our move to the Mather Retirement Community in Tysons a few years ago, and for me, it, it took a while for it to sink in that we were really leaving this city that we've called home for 39 years. But receiving this Fairfax County voter card in the mail a couple of days ago was a cold reminder of that truth. So I do promise that I will come back and visit, maybe too often, but I want you to know that I leave with the deepest appreciation and gratitude for all that you all have done for me. Thank you.
Andrews, would you like to join us up here for a photo?
Honorable members of City Council, and congratulations to those elected and re-elected. I am Dave Burkey, Director of Elections and General Registrar for the City of Falls Church, and I have been in this position, as Renee said, for 16 years, which requires being reappointed every four years. Renee Andrews has been on the board for every one of those appointments, and I would not be here today without her mentorship, guidance, and friendship. Not much more than I can cover than she already has. However, I read a book recently by the American History and Civics teacher Sharon McMahon, who is known as America's Government Teacher. The book is called The Small and the Mighty: About 12 Unsung Americans Who Changed the Course of History. People who read it will usually know someone in their life who could easily be included as a chapter in this book. So as I read it, the person who came to my mind, and my entire family agreed, was Renee Andrews. And it is so fitting that she served the City of Falls Church, which we affectionately call "small but mighty." So I am gifting this book to Renee on the chance that she does not already have it as a small token of my appreciation for her service.
Thank you all. So to continue the trend of the special night, we also get to celebrate our outgoing council member, Vice Mayor Debbie Shuns Hiscott. Someone who has poured so much of herself into this community, kind of continuing the theme about being good neighbors, and no one really embodies the be a good neighbor and be a good, caring neighbor than Debbie. When running for council, Debbie had said, I remember she told me this, and I think it might have been her campaign materials, "We can do hard things." And that was in 2020 during a pandemic. And actually, I was actually going to also quote "small and mighty," but mostly because Debbie often talks about how she's short, and but she really is small but mighty. And really, no surprise, she has done hard things all over Falls Church. Whether it was her Education Foundation days, the Family Assistance Fund, working on the bond referendum, which resulted in the Once in a Generation High School that we all admire, more diverse forms of housing pushing us to think about being greener about our future, more streamlined permitting process, and budget and fiscal discipline. If I have a hard thing to do, I want you, Debbie, on my team. But beyond those concrete accomplishments, Debbie has been a friend. She brought thoughtful collaboration and strong convictions of doing the right thing every time we talked, someone willing to roll up her sleeves, listen, and problem-solve with me. Debbie has also always shown up with her heart first, first reminding us to give voice to who's not at the table, and reminds me often to share that privilege. And also, we share our cheezits. And that kind of humanity, the warmth, and that selfless giving has made her leadership truly meaningful to Falls Church. So tonight, on behalf of the city and all of us who call Falls Church home, it is my honor to present a plaque and a gift as a small token of our deep appreciation. Debbie? Debbie, thank you for your leadership, your wisdom, your unwavering values in your heart that you've shared with us. I'm going to grab this. All of these things that's been hiding under my seat. Okay. And I'm sure we all have nice things to say, too. So here is, first up, the plaque.
That's beautiful.
Thank you. And then we also have, people have seen the new love sculpture. This is the new artwork that we have in Falls Church.
Is that because the only, the only meeting I ran when, as a vice mayor, was the meeting we debated the art for this till 2:00 in the morning and then tabled it?
Now you remember it forever.
Now I remember it. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I guess we'll do a quick photo, and then people, all the other things set, so do you all want to stand up for a photo first?
That's really neat.
It's a new piece of art. Do you want to hold both?
They're about to wrap up.
Yeah. Yeah. I know, and I don't know how much...
Because after that, it's just, there's an open...
There's new boards and commission members. I don't know if there's anything there, and then the public comments.
Well, there's a good amount of people there, so I don't know if the public comments is going to be...
Oh, it's going to take long.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm sure many other people also want to say and reflect on Debbie's time on councils as well as her time on community. Who wants to go first? Okay, I'm going to start this way. Ms. Downs?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have known Ms. Hiscock for quite a number of years. And I first knew her as a mom who I always looked up to. At the time, I was a young mom. And I looked up to her to give me all the advice about being a mom in Meridian, well, which at the time was George Mason High School and all that. And so I learned a lot. But then, we also worked together because she was the executive director of our Falls Church Education Foundation. And that's where I would think you and I really worked closely together. And she did a phenomenal job, really having the community and the business, the parent community and the business community, support our teacher grants. We raised a lot of money on the Falls Church Education Foundation, not only though for teacher grants, but also to support our students of need. And we are a wealthy community, but we do have a community, part of our community does need financial assistance. And Debbie really helped spearhead that. In fact, she was the one that, in the school system, the social workers used to try to fundraise for that. And it was sort of, they weren't really fundraisers. So they never were able to really raise much money for our at-risk population. And it was really Debbie's idea, like, let's have the foundation take this over. We're the fundraisers. And once we did take it over, the amount of money that we raised for our students who were at risk was just phenomenal. And it's even more so nowadays with what's happening with the economy and families who have lost their jobs, parents who have lost their jobs. So even now, you just have such a legacy of helping people in need in our community. And then I'll just say, finally, last year, when the position became open on the City Council, someone once said to me that sometimes women in particular don't wanna step forward into leadership roles unless someone encourages them. And, you know, I never really gave, I sort of thought about it when this position became open. But Debbie Hiscock was the person that first call I got. And she said, "I want you up there on that dais with me." And so I would never have even contemplated it had you not made that call. So I thank you so much. And you've been such a terrific mentor, of course, a friend, but also an amazing mentor to me. And we are gonna miss you greatly. You're, as the mayor said, your advocacy for the environment is something. And just, again, watching for those people who are not up here, looking out for those people in the community who don't always have a voice. So thank you for all you did. We hope we'll continue to carry forward everything that you've done. And we hope you don't go too far, because we'll probably be seeking your counsel. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to go next. And Debbie said, "Don't look at me, because we're the two that well up next to one another on council of the dais all the time." But, you know, we didn't know one another before we served together. And it's been such an honor and privilege to serve with you and to see you in this role and to have you as vice mayor. You know, during my first two years on council, you know, and to see you and your dedication and your commitment, you know, to all the issues that we're constantly confronting and to being willing to sort of, you know, speak openly about the challenges that council confronts. And so to see you're working on the Criminal Justice Board and how seriously you take those issues, as well as on the CDA and the ESC, you know, related to affordable housing issues and taxpayer burden in this city with respect to budget conversations. And then also, you know, your leadership on GovOps and making sure that we're not only an outward-looking city for, you know, serving and advocating for residents, but that we're also inward-looking in terms of the betterment of staff and ensuring that, you know, the work that we do makes us a stronger organization. And I think back to, you know, the initial council retreat. And it very much, you know, stands out in my mind when we were in the library. And, you know, we talked about, how do we think? Or how do we engage with one another? And you were like the one person on council on the far end who was like, "Well, I think out loud. I'm willing to, you know, think out loud." And I would say that, you know, for my first two years, I've really appreciated that. I try to, you know, like, open conversation and raise issues for council to discuss, you know, publicly. And I've really enjoyed having you as a thought partner in those conversations, along with all of my other colleagues here. So appreciate you, and good luck. Yes?
So thank you, really hard to follow that. But I wanna make two principal comments about Debbie. First of all, her dynamic leadership of the Falls Church Education Foundation. I was lucky to be on the City Council when we voted the creation of that. And I think she really built the Education Foundation to what was envisioned at that time. So Debbie, we owe you a lot for what you have done and what the Education Foundation will do in the future because of your leadership. Second point I wanna make about Debbie is her influence as a member of City Council. Her firmness and her never-changing focus on environmental issues has served our community well. And just as her leadership with the Education Foundation served the present well, she also has created a firm foundation for the future in terms of what we do environmentally. So Debbie, a big thank you for both of those.
Someone asked me during the reception, what I am gonna do without my work wife. So it has been a pleasure to serve with you in many capacities and for the last five years on City Council. And you were elected at the height of COVID-19. We were just talking about this earlier, that it was nearly a year before she actually sat behind the dais. So the first year of meetings were virtual, online. And even when we started the meetings, everyone was wearing masks. And you stepped up and did that in a really hard time in our country and in Falls Church. And ever since then, you have made a difference. You see the big picture of everything. You listen, and you learn, and you think things through. You are reasonable and driven and logical. As we are talking about things, you always have a really good point. And you get to it quickly. And I appreciate that. I've seen you lead many meetings, and you do such a good job of getting other people to get to their point quickly, too. And as others have mentioned, your deep knowledge of the city is so important, serving on City Council in so many different roles. And you bring that all to the table here. So we have been really lucky to have you. There's that Wicked song that I keep singing. I'm not gonna sing it for you, but you can all imagine. Because Debbie's been here, we have, the council has been changed for good. You've done a lot on City Council to make it a better place and a better opportunity to serve. And I'm looking forward to our next collaborations. I think Restaurant Week is coming up, so we can do some reels. Trisha Barber has asked me when we're gonna do our next reel. So that has been fun. And I'm sure we'll have many more opportunities to connect. But thank you for all you've done for the city.
Debbie, I wanna thank you deeply for being both a mentor and a friend to me. It's funny, I've always been in awe of you. I remember when I first joined council, there were times where you had to get up and give a spontaneous speech, whether it was at Eden Center or a Tanner Hill Foundation, something. And you weren't expecting to give a speech, and you just gave a speech. And it came out of you, like flowed like butter. I just remember being like, "I wanna be like that." Anyway, so I've been studying you. But I still have to write everything down. Something that really stands out about you and that you've really imparted in me is that, you know, behind every policy decision are real people whose lives will be affected. And you have such a deep commitment to your principles. And that's something that I will continue to take with me, even when you're not up here. So I wanna thank you for your years of service and your encouragement and advice. And while I will miss seeing you up here alongside us, I know you're not going away. So I'm looking forward to hanging out over some hibiscus tea very soon. Thank you.
So Debbie, I'm sure you want time to speak as well. As we know, Debbie brings so much wit and heart. But she also brings lots of hot pink accessories. And so before she speaks, we thought it was appropriate to actually celebrate you with a final surprise, with some sprinkling of bright pink in the audience, as well as up here.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, this is amazing. Hold on, I gotta take a video of this. Funny thing is, I was planning on wearing hot pink tonight. And I was like, "Oh, no, that's too pushy." All right, everybody, smile. I can't wait to show my parents. You all are amazing.
Do you wanna wear one, too? Sure.
Since I've, this five years on council, I'd need reading glasses now before I start. But thank you all for your kind words. I really appreciate it. It just means so much to me to hear from all of you and to see all these pink hats in the audience. This is hilarious. You know, I wanna make sure I start by welcoming Art into taking this chair up here. I know you'll do great things. And I'm super happy that my colleagues, my three colleagues have been reelected. So I know who to talk to for the next four years. I actually started with a really, really long speech. It was like 20 pages. I just started writing and writing and writing about all the things I learned and liked about being on City Council. And then I decided, nobody wants to hear all that. So I have condensed it significantly into a very small couple pages of comments. If I may. So almost 30 years ago, I moved to the City of Falls Church. And I began my community involvement as an appointee to the Women's Commission alongside Jody Acosta, who's now our treasurer. She wasn't at the time. And I lived up the street from Renee, so I had lots of great mentors myself. I've been serving this community in some form ever since and it's truly been one of the greatest honors of my life. I wanna thank my parents, who modeled public service constantly and quietly. Unlike me, they're quiet. My mom was involved in every scout, music, academic, and athletic group supporting the public schools. And my dad served in the Navy and then for decades as a volunteer EMT, paramedic, ski patrol member, Red Cross instructor, and a trail master. They did all of it behind the scenes without fanfare. I hope I've made them proud and that my own children will continue that legacy of volunteerism. Thank you to my husband, who had to get to work again tonight, who made it possible for me to serve while balancing evening and weekend commitments. And to my three children, you are the reason this work matters. I hope our efforts to expand housing options and make our city inclusive, where all really means all, mean you will one day be able to return here, whether to an apartment, a townhouse, a condo, or an ADU. I hope you've seen how much community engagement can shape a place. To my friends, many of whom are already at the bar, thank you for supporting me through campaigns, boards, commissions, PTA, boosters, and the Education Foundation, and every volunteer attendance and financial request I ever made. I know I can be intense about affordable housing or economic development, equity and inclusion, sidewalks, paving, and the environment. I've asked a lot of you over the years, and you have always, always shown up. The silver lining of my retirement is that I won't be asking you for anything else, at least for a while. To our engaged community, you make this city truly special. Our turnout rates and civic participation are extraordinary. And I've loved hearing your hopes for what should change and what should remain the same. To our general government staff, you care deeply about this little city and work incredibly hard to deliver services while also pushing for innovation. You deserve recognition and our deep appreciation. To my council colleagues, past, see, fill out their past and present, thank you. We bring different skills and experiences, but share a commitment to representing our entire community, expanding housing opportunities, supporting our schools, ensuring safety, and being fiscally responsible. I have complete confidence that you will continue to do great things for Falls Church. When I moved here nearly 30 years ago, honestly, because I couldn't afford North Arlington at the time, I had no idea Falls Church would become such a vibrant, walkable, thriving place. The transformation from a handful of chain restaurants to the incredible variety of experiences we enjoy today has been truly remarkable and is a credit to all who have served and worked on behalf of the city. Looking back at my reasons for running for council in 2020, other than Mary Beth encouraged me to do that, I'm proud of what we've achieved together. We completed Meridian High School on time and under budget. We delivered on economic development that helped pay for it. We expanded affordable housing, including units in perpetuity. We diversified our housing stock with new apartments, condos, and townhouses. We advanced our energy and sustainability goals. We approved key developments at Broad and Washington, West Falls, Modera, and Founder's Row, bringing restaurants, activity, and financial strength to underutilized sites. And we invested in small businesses, adaptive reuse projects, senior living options, children's activities, parks and parklets, and public spaces, preserving the community feel that makes Falls Church so special. We strengthened our infrastructure, supported our staff with competitive pay and resources, expanded our communications, and increased relief programs for residents who need them most. There's still much to do, especially around our affordable living and energy plans, fiscal responsibility during slower growth, and listening not only to the loudest voices, but also to the unheard and the unseen. That is the work of local government, to meet today's needs while preparing for those of future generations. And to the new council, I'll be cheering you on from the sidelines, but also holding myself and our community accountable for our progress as well. Thank you for the great privilege of serving you. The good news is I can't cry. Looking at all these pink hats is too funny. Yeah, can we take a photo with the pink hats and Wyatt and Sally and Celestin? Yes.
I dare you all to keep the hat on for the entire meeting. Okay, thank you all. We do have regular business on the agenda, so thank you for those of sticking around. Do we have any oaths of office to new board and commission members tonight?
We don't.
Okay. Well, if we're ready, let's move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, can you start with a summary of written comments we've received, please?
Yes. Since your last meeting, we received a letter from the Meridian High School PTA Board. They wrote to support one-time funding for the purchase of exterior front doors and installation of a security desk at the back entrance of Meridian High School and restaffing security resource officers at Meridian High School. The Falls Church Climate Action Network wrote to support the proposed Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy SEPAIS ordinance, as did the Environmental Sustainability Council, who voted to support that action. The following wrote to support programs that encourage biking and walking to school. Andrew Olson for Bike Falls Church, Peter Lobb, MHS Principal, Kelly Harris for the Falls Church Elementary PTA, Laura Downs for the MEH PTA, Kenny George for the MHS Bike Club, and Michael Trauberman for the Environmental Sustainability Council. Dick Doyle, on behalf of the Great Falls Street Committee, wrote with praise for city staff for their work on a traffic calming safety request from Great Falls Street. And Angela Miller wrote with concerns about e-bike use and safety considerations.
Great. What about public comment, either live or virtually tonight?
We do. The first person who signed up is Edward Salzberg, followed by Hal Lipman. Welcome.
Push, does that work? Okay, great. Good evening, council members. My wife Sharon couldn't be here today. She got sick, unfortunately. She would not miss it. She would not miss an event in which, where Debbie was honored. So I have to say something. I first met Debbie when she came to the Falls Church Ed Foundation. And I have to say, this organization is a brilliant organization. It's one of the most effective organizations I've ever seen. It's renowned throughout the state, probably across the country, for what it does for the schools. It brings in so much money and is so effective in what it does to leverage our education. When Debbie came in as executive director, some of you may not know that, this organization was on life support financially, and she and some of the board members, but especially Debbie, with her, with her just incredible intellect, passion, and just ability to get things done, turned it around, actually, pretty quickly. So within about two years, this was a functioning, healthy, profitable, and very, very effective organization. And she, and also, I want to say something about Renee as well. She and Renee are just two of the incredible women in Falls Church. Such incredible women in this city. People on the podium here, people all across the city. Many of the people that Renee mentioned are women. I have to say, I've been here long enough that I knew most of them. So this is an incredibly fortunate city, and all of the time that all of you spend, volunteer time, even though there is some compensation for council, it is, it's just dwarfed by the amount of time that you have to spend. I mean, this is the way America has to work with volunteers like you people, and the competence that you bring is just really extraordinary. So I just want to thank Debbie for what she brings. And the list of accomplishments that you went through, that is just an extraordinary legacy for you to leave here with the city. So congratulations on that, and just thank you all for your dedication.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hal Lipman.
Good evening, council. I'm Hal Lipman, and I'm here to offer my heartfelt two cents on this occasion acknowledging Debbie's service. And that's the key word, "service." For Debbie is and has been the personification of what public service means. And this is juxtaposed, then, with the underlying context, my thoughts and feelings tonight, that takes into account the horrifying disparagement of public service by our current leadership, and accepted by all too many uninformed and ignorant citizens of our country. This couldn't be more wrong. Debbie, as I said, is a shining example and personification of public service. All that's meaningful and good in what that term refers to. I know this all too well, as a former city councilman and school board member, and current president of the Citizens for a Better City, and serving on the Board of Directors of the Education Foundation. I know the real deal when I see it. And that's the real deal, sitting right in front of me. All caps, thanks, Deb, for all you've done, and no doubt will continue to do. You have long had and will continue to have my respect, admiration, and affection. And you'll continue to serve as an example that this country sorely needs to follow. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it for this evening.
Okay. Let's move on to the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Hardy, members of council, and members of the community. I've got three things to report on, and one of the main things in the city manager's report will be the presentation of the audit for 2025. And so in just a moment, we'll introduce David So, who will, our finance director, who will introduce our auditors. But before we get to that, if I could do two things. One, if, on behalf of city staff, join the council and the community in thanking Vice Mayor Hiscott for her service to the city. And I think one of the things we'll take forward is, is one of the things you represent to me is courage. And there's a great story that Debbie loves telling me all the time, which is a story of my son, Carlos, who, he was new to the United States, figuring everything out, and he was at Lee Graham School. And what Debbie loves telling the story about is he just dove off the diving board without really knowing how to swim. And, and he figured it out, he made it to the side of the pool. But I think the reason that Debbie loves that story so much is she admired his courage. And I think for all of city staff, I think that's something that we saw from you, and I think that's something we'll continue to carry forward. In public policy, we oftentimes are very cautious, we're oftentimes very careful, and rightfully so. We work for the public, we're taking care of public dollars, and sometimes we need to take risks, and we need to be courageous. And, and I think you represent that for us, and we'll try to carry that on for you as we go forward. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing to that story that was also part of my favorite, was that when he got to the side of the pool after figuring it out, jumped out and said, "I love this."
So enthusiasm. Let's take away enthusiasm, too. So the second thing, before I turn it over to David So, is we have some additional honors that we're going to be able to celebrate this week with the 2025 Service Awards. And this is something we do each year to recognize colleagues who are hitting important milestones of service with the city of Falls Church. And some of our headliners this year include Becky Woodsman, our Economic Development Director, celebrating 20 years of service in the city; Cindy Mester, our Director of Community Relations and Legislative Affairs, also celebrating 20 years of service. Thank you, Cindy. Kurt Deschermaker in our Building Safety Division, celebrating 20 years of service; Veronica Prince with our City Clerk's Office, our deputy city clerk is celebrating, we're celebrating 25 years of service to the city of Falls Church with Veronica. Joe Carter, who you all know very well as a Director of Emergency Management and Security, is celebrating 25 years of service to the city, many of those years of service as a police officer, rising up through the ranks in our police department. And Danny Schlitt, our Director of Recreation and Parks, is celebrating his 35th year of service to the city of Falls Church. So congratulations to Danny, congratulations to all of our honorees this year. Our council is welcome to this luncheon, and we look forward to a happy event. Now, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. So, and we'll hear from our auditors on the results of our 2025 financial operations that have just recently been completed. So David, take it away.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields, and good evening, members of the council. Tonight, we are presenting the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. The audit was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia. The city, as a reporting entity, includes the primary government and its component units, which consist of Falls Church City Public Schools and the Economic Development Authority. These financial statements have been audited by Brown Edwards &amp; Company, a firm of licensed, certified public accountants. The annual audit is a lengthy and detailed process that begins each June and involves an extensive review of the city's fiscal operations and internal controls. A significant amount of time is spent working closely with the auditors, and the process requires input from most city departments. I would also like to take this time to acknowledge the substantial work contributed by our Deputy Director of Finance, Melissa Reiman, and the entire finance team. And now, at this time, and I'd also like to thank Michelle Kopick as well, the Director of Finance for the schools. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Kristen Holland, the Audit Manager from Brown Edwards &amp; Company, who has joined us virtually to present the highlights of the audit.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Hello, everyone. My name is Kristen Holland. I am a Senior Audit Manager at Brown Edwards &amp; Company, and I am going to, just at a very high level, go over the three deliverables that we have created as part of the audit process. Two of them, I know is not in your agenda packet, so I'll just go over those at a very high level, but they are available to you if you need to physically see the copy. And then we'll go over the annual comprehensive financial report. So the first letter, I'll just go over very briefly, is a governance letter that is overall boilerplate its required communication to the governing bodies of all entities. It just basically goes over some sensitive estimates, sensitive disclosures, issues with management, to which there were none, and if there were any adjustments to the financial statements. The only thing I will point out about this particular letter is that it does discuss a new accounting standard that had a very significant impact on both the time put towards the accounting, but also on, it did add a liability to the city and the schools' records. It's related to, it's GASB 101 compensated absences, but in layman's terms, that's just related to PTO and SIC and various types of compensated leave. It was required for all governmental entities for FY '25, and like I said, it did require a decent amount of effort on all of the city staff, particularly Melissa and Michelle. The back of the audit letter, the Audit Committee letter, will have, once we issue the final versions, what you'll see tonight is in draft form, it will have a management representation letter, which is essentially management taking responsibilities for all the representations made to us during the audit. The second letter that I'll just go over is the, what's called a management letter or an internal control letter. And that is basically pointing out any issues that we may have found during the process of the audit. There is some current year comments, and there's updates on prior year comments that you're welcome to review. However, there is nothing in this letter that's considered a significant deficiency or material weakness, those of which would be the most concerned. And now I'm going to jump over to the ACFR, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And this is about a 200-page report, and I will say, I think the, everyone at the city, both in finance, but throughout this, throughout the city, there is a lot of additional work that we put on the staff as part of the audit, in addition to normal job duties. So this is absolutely a monster report, and it definitely is a lot that goes into it from our side, but your own side as well. So I appreciate all the cooperation throughout the entire process. So the first part that I will highlight, that's probably the most important, is going to be the audit opinion. And this is on PDF page 15. It is the second, second paragraph, and it is a clean opinion. It's technically called unmodified, but it's a clean opinion, it's the opinion that you want. Basically, everything that we found throughout the audit does not, it's materially correct, and nothing came to our attention that would be of a significant concern. Now, the third paragraph is specific to Falls Church. It's discussing the CDA, and this basically says that a separate auditor audited the CDA. And essentially, what we do is we take what the auditor has found, put the financial records into the city's ACFR, and we do not do any extra work on that. So that's kind of just calling that out and letting you all know how that works out between auditors. And again, on the second page of the opinion, it talks about those compensated absences again, just pointing to where you can find in the report, which is Note 25, the discussion of it. Essentially, it's not discussed in length, but it does show you the impact on both the beginning net position, because the beginning records had to be restated as part of a requirement of that standard. Now, the next part of the report is the management discussion and analysis. This is on PDF page 19, or 5A, if you happen to have a printed copy. This is actually prepared by management, it's not prepared by us. It's the only part of the entire report that's considered comparative. So it shows you FY '25 and FY '24. It also gives you reasons why there might have been significant trends, and it also provides a lot of information about generally how this report is laid out, and what are the different types of exhibits, and how they correlate to each other. Now, after that, you'll get into the financial data. I won't dig into that information very much, because already I've said that it's an unmodified opinion, and the MDNA is really what discusses trends. The only part that I will highlight is, again, Note 25, which is towards the back of the report. And again, it discusses that new accounting standard and its impacts. It also will point you to other areas of the report that you could look at if you wanted more information. And the last piece of the report I'm going to point out, which is a big difference, is the compliance section, and it's all the way on the back, about page 180. Normally, your compliance section is at least 25 pages, and that's because it contains both Virginia State Code compliance, and it would normally also contain federal grant compliance. Unfortunately, due to, no fault of anyone's, that's, that's on this, in this meeting, the federal government Office of Business and Management had some delays in releasing information that was required for audit firms to actually issue opinions on federal grants. Due to the government shutdown and a lot of other factors, we just did not get that information in time to be able to include that in this report. However, it will be issued in a single, a separate, single audit or federal grant report separately from what you're looking at today. It will still contain all the information it once did, it was, it will just have to be in a separate report instead of including, included in this report. And we expect that to come out in maybe January or so. But as far as the Virginia State Code compliance, there were only two issues that we noted. Again, they weren't of significant concern, but those are on the latter part of the, it's actually the last page, if you will, if you wanted to read it. Again, I'll point out, you'll see that there is notes that says this is a draft, and there's some highlights on this, which just indicates things that had not been resolved as of the time this was needed for your presentation. However, we are working towards that and expect to issue a final report of this financial report by the end of the week. And that's all I have. If there is any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Holland and Mr. So. Do we have questions or comments? Ms. Downs?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I have a very high, I'm, Ms. Holland, you probably don't know, but I'm relatively new on the council. And this is just a question, a very high-level question. I thought I was reading with interest about the, the component, I believe it's called Component Units, which is the school system in our Economic Development Authority. And what I thought was interesting, and again, this is just sort of high-level, but when you're looking at just the, the, I guess, cover page, where it's got all of our names and officials, and, you know, it makes sense that Dr. Date, our Superintendent of Schools, is on there, he's the head of one component unit. But I guess, and this might be a question also for Mr. Shields, could you explain just a little bit about with the EDA, if, if, for instance, Ms. Holland said something is not going, something, there are concerns about, you know, an audit with EDA, you know, not seeing a name, I just wanted to know, where does the buck stop with EDA in the sense of who is the responsible party for their books, if that makes sense?
Sure. It, so it's actually a management decision about what, which titles show up on that page that you're referring to. I cannot relate, I'm trying to think if you all ever listed an ADA member or not. I don't know, I've been presenting this for a couple of years, and I don't remember off the top of my head if there ever was one. I can assure you that we do require fraud inquiries. It's actually something that's required for every audit, no matter what type of audit it is, no matter what type of entity it is. it is, no matter what type of entity it is. We do speak with someone at the EDA. It's not always the same person, just like we speak with different people at the city. They're not always the same person, just due to the nature of the type of inquiry. And we do audit in full the EDA activity along with the schools and the city. So that, it is thoroughly audit as far as someone taking responsibility. That would, I think that would be a question for your management team.
Hi. So, the Economic Development Authorities, in any disbursements that they would make, would go through the city's finance department, so ultimately, we have eyes on it. They do have separate signing authority, but that, you know, kind of the procedurally, it has to go through city finance, and so I think that's one important piece of information. The principal asset that the EDA has is its land acquisition fund, which has kind of had, you know, over a million dollars in it, and so there are significant dollars at stake, and so I can provide a little bit of a fuller report on that, but I think that's a short answer in terms of how there's oversight.
Thank you very much, and, you know, I know we have an EDA member in the audience, and, you know, I'm a big, obviously, supporter of the EDA. I'm just thinking, the reason I brought up the question was, I was just thinking, if a member of the public is looking through this, and, to be quite honest, I didn't realize some of the money involved on the EDA side, and so that, I think that, that gives, you know, that reassures me that there's just someone, you know, just keeping an eye on how things, and, Ms. Holland, thank you. It sounds, I think, having a very thorough audit, you know, also answers a lot of my, concerns isn't the right word, but again, it is a little bit more money than I realize that the EDA has had, so it's good that someone on the staff side is just sort of also supporting them, making sure that everything is checking out right. So, thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Okay, I just had a quick one. So I always look forward to, and I still call it the CAFAR even though it's the ACFAR now, but usually on, like, later on, like, I think it was page 133 this year, the operating indicators I always find super interesting. So it's things like number of newsletters we send out, how many followers do we have on social media, how many events are we holding. A whole bunch of those are blank, because I know this is a draft, but when do we expect those indicators added back in? I think those are just really good KPIs to understand, like, here's all the things that your city government does, and I think it's really informative for the public.
Sure. I know Melissa was working on gathering that data. Some of those tables actually take a lot of time to gather data, just inside and outside of the city. The information's kind of not always easy to come across. So I know she was working on that and had compiled most of the information. We, as I say, we won't release it with these yellow highlights unless the data is from the federal government that we can't actually get for some reason. So we will have that information put in the report before we finalize it, and as I said, we expect that to be by end of week.
Okay. And Ms. Ryman is here. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, well, just to reiterate what Ms. Holland had said, yes, we are gathering some of that information. Some of them have already come in. We just weren't able to include them in this draft that went out to council.
Okay. Well, when the final's available, just let us know.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Congrats, and thank you for-
And you will get all the final reports, including the letters that Ms. Holland referenced earlier.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo, I think that a big, you know, we buried the lead here. Big congratulations to all of our staff who oversee our finances, that we had a clean audit, and of course, we always, as Ms. Hiscott brought up earlier today, about our high school, you know, maintaining that AAA rating is just such a feather in our cap, so thank you all for really doing what's right by our citizens and our community. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I will do a shout-out also to our school cohorts, Michelle Kopeck. I know with the turnovers this year, it's been a climb. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for joining us, Ms. Holland. Is that it for the-
Thank you so much.
-city manager's report?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to council requests. We have council requests of the city manager. Ms. Flynn?
I guess I just wanted to bring up, and the city manager and police department are aware of this, as are council colleagues, that, you know, we appreciate the work that DPW has done at Annandale and Gundry, and the narrowing of the lanes, and restriping. I guess we've still received a number of comments about concerns at that intersection in terms of the stop at Annandale and Gundry, and so for community members, I was just wondering, Mr. Shields, if you wanted to provide any update about ongoing efforts or ongoing monitoring of that intersection, or kind of continued work that DPW may be doing to monitor the changes or improvements that were made, and whether they are having their intended effect.
So I'll, you know, we did gather data prior to making the changes, and so I will check in with DPW in terms of plans on checking data afterwards. What we did on Annandale is we shrank down the travel lanes. We added dedicated bike lanes. We added stop-ahead indicators on the road. We already had a stop sign with a flashing red beacon, and the complaints, you know, fundamentally are about stop sign running. And this is an endemic problem across North America, probably the world, and, you know, unfortunately, that is something we see throughout the city of Falls Church. Engineering solutions are geared towards trying to tame the traffic, and so we'll, you know, continue to gather data in terms of progress on that. In the meantime, it is really crucial, I think, for everybody entering into any controlled intersection, whether it's a signalized intersection or a stop sign-controlled intersection, to see that the oncoming traffic has come to a complete stop, and I think that just has to be everyone's common practice.
Thank you. And, Mr. Shields, not to put you on the spot, but we did, just, I think, beginning yesterday and today, we were receiving some letters about the WNOD and snow removal. So I know this was something that came up last year, too. So I didn't know, not to put you on the spot and answer tonight, but this, again, this seems to be that we, it was brought up, and my understanding is the Falls Church City portion of that trail doesn't get always cleared as efficiently as the Arlington part. So I didn't know if you could speak to that. If not, we could, we could table it, but I know that, I'd just seen these letters coming in today and remembering them from last year. I'm just wondering what we could really do, since we're just starting the winter season now, if there's any, any ways we could, you know, I don't know if it's contracting to whoever Arlington uses, which will obviously cost some money, but I'm just wondering if there's any thoughts you had off the top of your head, or if you wanted to get back to us.
I think probably the best thing to do is to get back with the city council with more facts, but sort of the bottom line is Arlington County has supplemented Northern Virginia Park Authority for enhanced snow removal on the trail. The city has not budgeted funds to do the same thing. We have benefited from seeing, you know, the Nova Parks has equipment that they operate on the trail, and they were doing it last year. However, because it's not under contract, it kind of fits in with their priorities. It's not something we have direct control over. But it is, it is not, there is not funding in the current year's budget FY '26, so what people saw last year is what people should expect to see again this year, and I would say that that potentially is a budget discussion for FY '27. You know, it could be on our list of things to consider.
That'd be great, if you could also get back to us when you could guesstimate what that number would be. That would be great. Thank you.
Others?
I would just second that. That's all.
Ms. Conley?
And I would, Mr. Shields, I would just ask that this endemic problem of rolling through stop signs, which we see everywhere, part of the problem is people are looking for vehicles and not pedestrians, and as we try to become more multimodal, I feel like that's got to be the message, is don't just look for cars, look for walkers and bike riders, because it's easy to see a car, much less easy to see a child or bicycle.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for council requests. Let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the first item, please?
Yes, the first item under second readings of ordinances requiring public hearing is TO 25-17, Ordinance to amend the City Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter Two Administration, Chapter Six Buildings, Chapter 15 Fees, Chapter 38 Subdivision, and Chapter 48 Zoning to reflect July 1, 2025 Virginia Code changes, removing site plan approval authority from the Plan and Commission, and assigning it to the designated agent, and to amend the maximum review time of, one, site plan subdivision plat and plan of development applications solely involving partial, parcels of commercial or residential real estate, and, two, resubmitted plat, site plan, and plan of development applications.
Welcome, Mr. Zhang.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, excuse me, members of the city council. My name is Henry Zhang with the city's planning team. The item in front of you, that's the final draft for the amendment to the city code in response to the recent changes to the Code of Virginia regulating the review and approval of site plan and subdivision applications. The update to the staff report, basically highlighted in gray, only one changes to the draft code language. It's on line 746. One important update is the Planning Commission's recommendation. On November 19, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of TO 25-17 to the city council for public hearing and action tonight. In the motion, Planning Commission also recommended that city council work with the state delegates in the upcoming state legislative session to allow the Planning Commission to be the designated agent in approving site plans for the city. With this update, staff recommend adoption of TO 25-17. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Zhang since our last discussion about it? If not, I'm going to open the public hearing, because it is second reading and a public hearing. Are there any members of the audience who wish to comment about this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move to adopt TO 25-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it was Downs on the second. Call roll, please. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a comment, because the vote was called very quickly on this. This action is something I really don't like, and I personally hope, and I ask, whether we're prepared to follow the Planning Commission's request for advocating for making the Planning Commission the designated agent. So Cindy Mester, I know, I chair the legislative committee, it's something that I would strongly support, and I wonder whether we're moving forward on that. I will say in addition that this action was forced by special interest legislation that should never have been enacted, and I hope that we'll be able to find ways to amend it or repeal it in the future, but right now, we have to deal with the reality that it wasn't acted into law. So Cindy, can you help me if we are going to pursue the Planning Commission's request?
Yes. Now, due to the timing of the-
Could you speak more loudly? I'm sorry.
Yes, but due to the timing of the Planning Commission's action and council's adoption of the legislative program, this specifically isn't called out, but as we talked about, that we can revise in appendix, so based on council adopting this ordinance today, I will reach out to our delegation and request consideration for bills and particular delegate assignment that was the lead on the original legislation.
So effectively, we're moving forward on the Planning Commission's request. Is that right?
That would be my interpretation, based on council's action this evening.
Okay, does anyone on council disagree with that?
Looks like Mr. Lott wants to say something.
So I think because council has adopted its legislative program, if it would like to amend it, it would need to take a vote to add this particular item to your legislative agenda. This ordinance tonight would not necessarily imply that you favor having the Planning Commission act as the designated agent.
Okay, well, I move to amend the city's legislative program to include the action requested by the Planning Commission.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Ms. Flynn on the second? Does she call a vote for the amendment to the legislative program? Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, as I've said, what I'd like to do is make sure we monitor how this goes. I think we estimated six to seven site plans per year, and based on the work of staff, we appreciated the quick turnaround figuring out how we adjust our processes, and so if we can be apprised of how this goes now that we've adopted the new process and the new designated agent authority, that would be great to keep council updated.
Just to be clear, though, right? I mean, we're now amending, based on the vote, the legislative program, so-
Yeah, but I would still like to be kept informed about-
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, over the next, because even if the General Assembly takes action, it wouldn't go into effect until July 1, 2026, and so we're going to have seven months of the new process, and so I think it would make sense to be apprised of how that process goes.
Right. Thank you.
That is my request.
Madam Mayor, if I may, regarding the changes, I think I was in the APAVA legislation session last Friday. This time, we heard a solution. Basically, they're going to change, the Legislation Works Commission would like to lower the, to increase the population threshold. Basically, they are talking about 25,000 population for the locality. I think this is the very only solution so far I heard. So if that would be the case, next year, after legislation session, I think the city will have the Planning Commission as the approval authority because of that changes.
Great. We'll see how the next session goes. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Are we ready to move on to the next item? Okay, let's call the next item then.
Yes, on first reading, we have TO 25-20, Ordinance to, one, amend the City Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter 40 Taxation, to add Article 21 Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE Financing Program. Two, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the related Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE Financing Program CPACE Program Agreement. And three, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the related Virginia Energy Locality Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Agreement. And you may notice that the title has changed since your work session, because the Virginia Authority did ask us to incorporate those two agreements directly into the ordinance as opposed to by reference, and so that has been done in the ordinance, but they're the same agreements that you saw, they were just attachments before, and now they're in the ordinance.
And Mr. Kurt Lawrence, our environmental sustainability coordinator, is going to lead our staff report on this tonight. Thank you, Kurt.
Welcome.
Great, thank you, council, for hearing this item tonight. We have first reading of the CPACE Financing Program. That stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy, and the idea, as we talked about during the work session, is to provide favorable financing for projects with environmental benefits, and the key action there is by signing over enforcement rights of, that has the same power of tax lanes to lenders, and that provides favorable rates and extended times, which leads to a little bit easier of a process for developers doing clean energy projects. Since the last work session in November, we have not made too many changes to the staff report, other than the title, as mentioned. If you'll notice, on the last couple pages- If you'll notice, on the last couple pages of the staff report, beginning on page five and then taking up pages six and seven, we have a question and response table from the work session. So all the questions and comments that were made at that work session between myself and Virginia PACE Authority, we conducted some more research and held a couple meetings and had some conversations and came up with the answers to these questions. And I won't read through all of them, just in the interest of time, but I'd be more than happy to expand upon any of them if there's any follow-up questions that come up. I think that's good for that section, that they were all great questions, so I won't pick out anything in particular. And then as you continue through the rest of the staff report, you will notice that now attached to the ordinance, there are those two previously called attachments from earlier. They are the CPACE Program Agreement that happens between the city, the property owner, the lender, as well as the CPACE Locality Agreement that happens between the jurisdiction and Virginia Department of Energy. At this point, I'd like to open it up to questions and comments.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for being responsive to our last discussion and all those follow-ups.
Of course.
Do we have questions or comments for Mr. Lawrence? Flynn?
I just wanted to say thank you for the follow-up work that was done on it coming out of the last time we discussed this item, and also just confirm with the city attorney that you were comfortable with the provision of automatically delegating the authority to the lender as opposed to taking it up on a case-by-case basis. It seemed from a, like, administrability point on our side that I understood why we were doing it this way. Just wanted to confirm your view on that. I am comfortable and believe that's where the enforcement should lie. Thanks.
Others? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. Just to go over a couple fundamental questions about this, is the city taking on any financial or legal liability as a result of this program?
No.
I agree with that, no.
Good. Second question is, is the city losing any tax revenue it would otherwise be getting as a result of this program?
No. I agree with that, and that's our assessment.
Thank you. Then answers my questions.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Is there a motion?
I move to grant first reading to TO 25-20, schedule a public hearing in second reading for January 12, 2026, and advertise the same according to law.
Is there a second?
A second.
Underhill on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskud?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you back in January. Can we call the next item, please?
Yes, we have TR 25-37, Resolution Adopting and Updated Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
And we have our Director of Public Works, Amanda Stout Brain, and she's virtual. Amanda, would you like to handle this one, or would you like me to?
Sure. Good evening, can you hear me?
We can. You can go ahead.
Sure, good evening, thank you. So back on October 20, you may recall, council held a work session on the Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. We had a really thorough discussion, and in the interim, council requested that the city attorney's office conduct a scan of the plan to ensure that all required elements of Title II of the ADA were addressed in the plan. And the results of that legal review and the discussion of how we've incorporated those responses are in this staff report on pages three through six. If anyone has questions, we can talk through those, but in each of those items, council referenced how that might be incorporated, and staff and the consultant have added, you know, sections in the revised draft report, the final draft report, to address, to note how we've addressed those items. And so with that, we feel that the full ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan is ready, and we present the resolution on the last page for your review. Kang Nguyen, our project manager for the project, is on the line, and Cindy Mester is also in the room and can assist with any questions any of you may have. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brain. Questions or comments on the ADA plan? Flynn?
I'll just again thank the city attorney's office on this and staff for the additional work in strengthening, you know, our response and ensuring that members of the public are able to fully participate in our program services and activities. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see much discussion, so is there a motion?
I move to adopt TR 25-37.
Second.
It's Flynn on the second. Call roll.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskud?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to budget guidance. Call the next item.
Yes, TR 25-44, Resolution to Adopt a Guidance Statement on the Development of the FY 2027 City Budget.
So thank you, council. What's before council is a resolution that would provide guidance to the city manager and to staff and to the school board as we develop our budgets. And so in the staff report, we have the schedule for the coming months where budgets will be developed, particularly in the months of January and February. In the month of March is when the Planning Commission will provide its recommendations on the capital improvements program. The school board will take action on its budget request for FY 27, and I will be presenting in late March, March 23, kind of all these streams coming together along with the general government budget requests. The city council would then would have those budget requests, and through a series of work sessions, public town halls, work through a series of decisions and adopt budget then in May, and then the budget that we're talking about will go into effect on July 1 of 2026, just over six months from now. On Monday night last week, the city council met with the school board to review some important data about FY 27 budget development. The council heard from the Stephen Fuller Institute, who's been tracking enrollment projections for our school system. So we got trends on enrollment growth and other cost drivers for the schools. We had a survey of the West Falls development and how that is helping to finance the construction of the, the completion of the Meridian High School, and we provided some of the cost drivers on the general government side, along with a revenue forecast. As David So presented in his presentation, this is a very difficult time to do revenue forecasting. There's a lot of variables that are, and a lot of changes happening in the national capital region, and I think everyone is struggling with their financial forecast. What we do think is that growth and revenue will be modest for the coming fiscal year. And one other dimension to our revenue forecast is that, to the extent that there is growth, we are seeing it particularly in the residential sector, the single-family homes, townhouses, and condos sector of our real estate tax base. Residential taxes account for 40% of the entire general government budget, so it's a very important part of the budget, but it also is very impactful for households who are also experiencing the economic headwinds that the region is facing, and it's, that's sort of the main impacts are at that household level. So the long story and short of our budget presentation is that we're committed to share information as we get it, but right now, we're forecasting rather significant budget gaps for FY 27. And so some of the dynamics, if you take the middle forecast that our finance department has developed, that would generate potentially some new revenue for the general government, but we also, that would be part of the cost share with schools. On general government, we have some revenues that are not part of the cost share, and most notably, those include investment returns. And we, right now, are anticipating that we'll probably have some decreases in our investment returns, and part of that is because we have lower cash balances. We've expended all of our ARPA funds in the past year, and we also are, and no one can guess what interest rates will be, but there is a common regard that it's not unreasonable to expect some lower interest rates in the coming year. Both of those would drive down investment returns. And so on the budget gap scenarios, and these are really just for the general government budget gaps, they range sort of on, on the high side of a more optimistic revenue forecast, we'd have a $2.7 million budget gap, and on the lower revenue forecast side, a $5.4 million budget gap. This is all to say that this is going to be a challenging budget. We've had a series of budgets where we've been able to meet a lot of needs and have fairly substantial growth in both the school operations and in general government operations, and we think that next year's, this year's budget process is going to be starkly different from what we've experienced in the prior three years. So in that context, and in the context that many of our households and many of our community members are experiencing a lot of uncertainty or negative impacts from the economic condition of the national capital region, the city council has asked for some changes in this year's budget guidance relative to last year. I'd be happy to summarize those for the city council. We did read them through at your, at your agenda-setting meeting on Wednesday morning, and so before I start reading, let me sort of take a cue from the council, whether you want to sort of walk through that language, or whether we just stay, really just review the changes and then take it from there.
I think summarizing the themes would be fine, just for the benefit of the public as well. No need to re-wordsmith or read everything again.
Okay. So one of the, sort of in the preamble to the budget guidance resolution, it does discuss at a high level the economic headwinds that I've just described verbally and the difficulties that will present for budgeting in the coming year. One of the points of budget guidance that the city council discussed in some detail is bullet two, where it speaks to the expectation that real estate tax rates will be adjusted to protect homeowners from significant growth in their annual tax bill, noting that approximately 40% of civilian revenues, city revenues, come from residential real estate taxes. This bullet also notes that the council is open to staff presenting other tax and revenue options for council consideration to meet core government and school service needs. And then the last point is the commitment to continue to share information as new revenue data comes in and as we get a closer hand on some of our key cost drivers. As Mr. So presented, there are some fixed costs that we're going to have to face, and those include our interjurisdictional contracts and some other sort of mandatory expenses, and then there's the variable costs, and so we'll keep council informed on what we're learning about those cost drivers as well. The other key provisions in budget guidance, it does call for reduction, spending reduction options, this is bullet three. So in addition to council being open to some of the tax and revenue options referenced above, outside of the real estate tax on residential property owners, city council is also asking that staff provide spending reduction options with the analysis of the associated changes and reductions to city general government and school programs or projects. So the spending reduction is the focus of bullet three. The budget does call out the need to maintain competitive compensation for employees and other investments in our workforce, and these are certainly, over the long term, things that any organization has to constantly make sure that we're staying on top of, because if you lose that competitiveness on compensation, it's something that ultimately it does need to be made up to maintain the integrity of our operations. The budget focuses on bullet five, funding for paving and sidewalk improvements, along with the associated walking and biking facilities that are called for in adopted plans. The budget guidance speaks to making sure we fund our tax relief programs, provides funding for public safety and emergency management, including competitive compensation in those areas, calls out for funding for continued rent and food assistance and emergency assistance for households in need, commitments towards following through on our community and our government operations energy action plans, and it lists specific actions that have already been put into our city plans and ensuring that we follow through and accomplish those carbon emission reduction actions. There's a new bullet, bullet 10, that speaks to building permit fees. We are in the process of looking at those. We'll bring recommendations to the city council on those in some briefings before budget presentation, but the basic idea is to make sure that the cost of administering building plan review and inspections is covered through those fees. It speaks to utility fees being adjusted to meet normal inflationary cost growth and sanitary sewer connection fees in particular to be adjusted as needed to ensure that growth pays for growth. And then the last two are some, two points of guidance that have been in, I think, probably for the past five or six years to make sure that the budget tells the story about how the portion of the water sale proceeds benefits the taxpayers in an ongoing basis through its investment in the city pension fund, which reduces the cost to the taxpayers for that pension expense, and then making sure we have a good public information campaign for the budget every step of the way.
Great. Thank you for that summary. People have comments since we discussed this last Wednesday, or questions, things to add.
Ms. Conley?
Mr. Shields, I think time flies because I'm pretty sure. Line 193, calculate the portion that's in the pension program has been in there at least 10 years, if not 11 or 12.
I think that's right. The years go by.
The years go by, but that has been in there constantly from the day we voted yes, we would do that. The rest of it, I like, by the way. Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Conley, just remember that you need to read your disclosure statement before we get to the motions.
I make the following statement before city council's budget guidance for the FY 2027 general fund budget. I'm an employee of the Falls Church City School Board. As such, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Ms. Siskud?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, this is my last formal discussion of the budget, I will be following it, obviously, but just to reiterate a couple points that we talked about last week in the mayor's meeting when we discussed this, and they're not specific to the language of this, but just to the ideas behind budget overall. And that's just a reminder to contemplate how we address the 150-plus students that we funded in last year's budget that unfortunately did not join us in FCCPS this year, and just to contemplate how we use that and assess that going forward into the FY 27 budget. And then, secondly, you know, an additional focus on commercial assessed value, I remain optimistic that perhaps that should be going up, and that might be an area of additional revenues that could help address some of the gap there. So those are my closing points on budget from this side of the dials, and I'll see you from the other side next year. and I'll see you from the other side next year.
Thank you. Others? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. I support this. I think it's a balanced approach at this point considering the uncertainties and the challenges. But we've prevailed against challenges in the past, and I know we'll do this time as well. Want to make one other point, that the sensitivities being shown here to the tax burden that has fallen on residential generally, but single-family homes in particular, have seen a very large burden on them. So I think this, at least my intent, and I think it's the intent, that to show sensitivity to that is one of the considerations for this year's budget. Thank you.
That reminds me, Mr. Shields, I think in years past, we compare growth in AVs across jurisdictions. Obviously, I think COVID, everybody saw large appreciation in residential real estate just because there was a low supply, people had more money, people moved around and drove up prices. Do we have a comparison of actually how our residential AV compared over the, say, the past five, 10 years versus our neighbors? Because I imagine everyone's grew a lot, but ours maybe in particular because we've made it an attractive place to live.
We have typically presented that on a year-to-year basis. I don't think we've put it into a 10-year chart on a comparative basis.
It'd be helpful to actually see it regionally if that's available, if I can make that request in advance, because everyone has seen it. Because the same discussion is happening in Fairfax County about burden on residential. And I think it's frankly just a trend of the region that residential's just grown more quickly because we have limited housing supply. And when you have, you know, a lot more people competing for a limited supply drives up prices and drives up the values. So I think that actually might be a helpful thing to put in context of that we're not the only ones seeing residential AVs go up so much. So I have two comments. I wanted to build off what the vice mayor said about commercial. But so two sides of the equation with every budget, right? So I think, as Mr. So said, the only thing that's certain in this budget is the uncertainty. And so certainly on the revenue side, while it is hard to project what things are coming, I appreciate the commitment from staff to actually monitor things in real time and be able to give us updates. So let's not wait till Q2 results, which I guess is probably February. But as you get October, sales and meals tax and other things, like we'd love an update on how things are looking October and November, like maybe on a monthly basis. That would be nice to know whether we are trending, you know, one way or the other, so that we are doing it well before February and can also talk to our school partners about how things are looking. On the expense side, because that's the other half of the equation, frankly salaries are our biggest driver, and everyone in the region is facing the same crunch. And I think actually everyone else in the region is probably worse off than we are because of commercial vacancies and how much commercial is a much bigger part of their revenues. And so one thing that I think, there's two principles that we have, this council has maintained, but I think is important to talk about more explicitly. One is salary parity across general government and schools. And so we want someone to be just as proud when they are a police officer or a public works, you know, engineer as they are a teacher and be able to see similar increases in colon raises. And so that's something I personally find an important commitment. The other part is being competitive with the region. And so if everyone else is also struggling in their upcoming budgets, I think it behooves us not only monitor what our revenues look like, but also monitor where their increases are and see whether they're going to be able to do 4% or 5% raises. I'm guessing they're going to have a challenge with some of that. And so between now and when, you know, we start budget or when the school board starts budget, it would be nice to not only have updates on how we're doing on the revenues on a monthly basis, as well as any new information we get on the expense side and what everyone is targeting with their salaries.
Ms. Hiscott?
I just wanted to double down on the work that has been done to reach, I don't know if parity is the right word, but to approach general government staff and teaching staff with the same respect and admiration and financial reward for jobs well done. All of them are important to the success of the city.
Mr. Snyder?
And Mayor, just one other comment. It's a comment I've made before. The, and the news press ran a story about Fairfax County, the amount of money they're sending to Richmond and not, and only 50% of it comes back. We're actually worse. And I think that's a point that we all deal with here, but I think is not generally known. And I appreciate the article in the news press. But if there could be a follow-up article pointing to the fact that Falls Church citizens through sales taxes and income taxes send far more to the state than we get back in any kind of state aid. And the differences between the donor jurisdictions, and we're absolutely at the far end of that, and the jurisdictions that benefit from it are, those jurisdictions are getting 60% or 70% of their budgets from the state. And we're getting, what, 10%, 15%? And so one of the things I hope would be calculated, if we got even 50% of that money back or 60% of that money back, what would that equate to in terms of revenue? And I think it would be significant. So I just want folks to know that we're wrestling with this. The community, I know, will be behind us as we go through this budget. But there are elements of this that are beyond our control and are acting very much at odds to the best interests of the city of Falls Church and our taxpayers. So thanks for the opportunity to make those comments.
I think the data is Fairfax County sends, for every dollar they send, they get 50 cents back. And Falls Church, for every dollar we send, we get 34 cents back. So we are worse off.
And, you know, again, maybe we need to join with our school board colleagues. And, you know, they have a lobbyist they use, but they have the same issue with the local composite index. So that's something that, you know, even when we had COVID relief money coming into the schools, it was subject to the LCI. So we never got, you know, for parts of the state that got a dollar, we got 20 cents. So, you know, it is something that affects both the schools and the city. So it might be, you know, good to join forces and try to really tap.
I'm not sure the state revenue picture is going to be that rosy either, given that they're going to have to plug holes with healthcare and other issues due to federal government changes, so.
Okay, well, do you have a motion to adopt budget guidance then?
Move to adopt TR 25-44.
Second. Ms. Flynn on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to consent. We have appointments as well as two items that were shared with us last week in work session. Does anyone want to remove anything from consent? Mr. Shields, does anyone want to comment about consent or, you previewed it with us before?
So I did want to just make sure the council, I don't know if this violates the rules of consent, but that we did have some technical changes on the contract for the storm and sanitary sewer services. And, you know, the substance of it is the same and that we're asking for permission to contract with these construction companies to be able to do this work in our utility divisions. But there was a technical change to it. It does remain on consent. We had talked about moving that.
That's incorrect agenda.
Oh, I'm looking at the old agenda.
Well, it's up here too. It's on other business.
Okay, so they, we will, if, once we've gotten through consent, then we'll describe that technical change for the contract.
Okay, so that number four was removed from the consent agenda that you'd be voting on.
The online version does have the storm and sanitary sewer infrastructure and services item under the other business. So it's posted the way.
Yeah, it just changed, and the paper didn't get changed.
Okay, so sticking with consent, where it's just appointments and then to retirement benefits things. So I move to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a second? A second. Ms. Underhill on the second. Can you call roll, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Moving on to the non-consent item.
Yes, that's authorize the purchasing agent or authorize designate to award a total of five contracts for storm and sanitary sewer infrastructure and services.
Can I just congratulate Jim Coyle on your reappointment? He was a little anticlimactic because it was part of the consent, so thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you and congratulations.
I'm sorry that I jumped in there.
Mr. Shields?
So let me invite our Director of Public Works, Amanda Stout-Brain, to speak to this item. Amanda, if you're available to do so.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Yes, as Mr. Shields just said, this was on the consent agenda last time. The gist of this is that we are still looking to, there are two potential awards for two stormwater capital projects. The Sharrow Avenue Storm and Sewer Improvements Project and the Hillwood Avenue Two Storm and Sewer Improvements Project, that we would be looking to use some of this group of three contractors to execute those CIP projects. And then we have the operations and maintenance, kind of on-call work as part of our storm and sanitary sewer portfolio that would also be looking to use these same three contractors for. And so we went through the whole process. There were four firms that bid on it, and there are three of them that we feel like there is enough work to provide the correct amount of flexibility and cost effectiveness in using these firms to execute both two CIP stormwater projects and three operations and maintenance stormwater projects. So I'll leave it at that. But if anyone has any specific questions for me or the city attorney, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Brain? Not a secure motion.
Move to authorize the purchasing agent or authorize designate to award a total of five contracts as described in the staff report for work related to storm and sanitary sewer infrastructure and services.
Second. Downs on the second, and that was Debbie's last motion.
I'm glad it could be with sanitary sewer infrastructure.
So glamorous. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the scheduled business. Do we have any business not on the agenda? Committee reports and reports? Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to report that the CCJB met last week for our, kind of every other monthly meeting. I'm looking forward to seeing who can join Chief Hart and Sheriff Kay in my retirement. But it's an organization that's going to require a lot of stamina and a lot of work. This is an area that is being pummeled by federal funding, you know, the unhoused, the, basically all the mental health and social services health for those who have been either incarcerated or were trying to divert from being incarcerated. It was a really serious conversation, and it's really heavy work, but it's incredibly important work. And there are probably 30 organizations that are in those meetings talking about how they can best serve our region and Arlington and Falls Church specifically in addressing challenges with unhoused and those suffering from what the world has delivered to them in the past couple of years in particular. So thank you for the opportunity to participate in that, and I look forward to the work that the CCJB is going to continue to do in our region. It's incredibly important.
Thank you for serving it. I'm glad we've resurrected that board. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks. I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate all my colleagues who have been elected and re-elected and their families. We didn't really have a chance to address them here tonight. Hopefully we will in the future. But I just wanted to thank everybody here. And as we all know, being an elected official is a real family affair. And so I wanted to recognize everyone here. And of course, that includes my family and my wife, who is everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council member comments? I don't think we have minutes tonight either, right? Okay. Well, it's 9:30, so let's adjourn.
Wow.
We're adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody. Enjoy the recess. We'll see you in January.